Tim, Jerry, Ajimel.
Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, June 17, 2021, Meeting of the Planning Board at Town Hall. First time we've had this in quite some time. So, welcome, everyone. First item of business to review and approve minutes. We have no minutes to go through it this time. I do have bills, several bills. First one is WB Mason, $3.68 for office supplies. McMahon Transportation, Sun Tech Park, $640. Traffic peer review. Graves Engineering, Sun Tech Park, site plan peer review for $3,372.50. Graves Engineering Falcon Farms, definitive plan peer review, $2,490.75. Graves Engineering, 235 Main Street, second site plan peer review, $420.75, for a total of $6,927.68. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the expenditures as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was going around? And how board member comments? Mr. Rao?
No comments, Chair.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Rotolakis?
Only comment is, "I'm glad to be back in person."
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Deo.
I have no specific comments at this time, but I will get into our meeting process in a moment. So, I guess we'll start with that. So, seeing as we haven't had an in-person meeting for well over a year now, I think it would be prudent to go over the rules of our meeting process. So, I have a little script here. For those who have not been here before, just to make you aware of our procedures, we will be open to public meetings and hearings. And if there's a new hearing, the clerk will read the notice. The proponents will introduce themselves and make their presentation. Planning Board members and professional staff will ask questions and make comments to which the proponent will respond. The hearing will then be open to the public, abutters, and other interested parties for questions and comments to which the proponent will respond. A general discussion will follow, and the planning board will either continue or close the public hearing. For the public part of the hearing, all speakers are asked to stand prior to speaking and give their names and addresses. I remind you that all comments are being broadcast as well as being recorded for rebroadcast by the Shrewsbury Media Connection. I further advise you that neither the hearing nor this record should be considered as a vote on the issue before the planning board. A vote by the board will be taken after the public hearing has been closed. Please address all conversations through the chair, and please speak up. This room, the sound in this room tends to muffle and does not carry to the listening audience clearly. The microphones that you see are only for the use of Shrewsbury Media Connection. I remind you that people have the right to use their property as they see fit within the constraints of the town zoning bylaws and the planning board subdivision rules and regulations. Be aware that we do not deal with A&R or proven, not required lots outside the subdivision, nor do we deal with wetlands or any other conservation issues. I just have one added thing to put on here. Where we are back in person, we would like to request anyone who is not fully vaccinated to please wear a mask. Having said that, we'll get off to our first public meeting. This is for 230 Cherry Street. Request for de minimis change, and Mr. Rotolakis will be recusing himself.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself.
Carl Holtgen, Quinn Engineer.
Thank you.
We were forward to board back in March for a site plan modification of 230 Cherry Street. There were some interior modifications being done to the building. There was exterior modifications being done to the building, so it corresponded with that. The exterior work for that modification had been completed. During the course of that work, there were some minor modifications that were done on site. We're seeking from the board to approve these as de minimis changes to the site plan. Specifically, the changes are, there was an addition of seven exterior parking spaces. No, I'm sorry. The plan that was approved called for 30, so if we've got 37 that were striped on site, that's an increase of seven. The dumpster in this area here was moved a little bit. That was just to improve the access to the dumpster. The dumpster in this area back here was moved a little bit as well. That was just to maximize the usable parking on site. So, the dumpster and the parking in that area will be coordinated. When the dumpsters get unloaded, they'll have to make sure nobody parks there, but the owner's fine with that. There were some propane tank storage proposed at this location. That's been moved to this location, sort of away from the building. During the course of the work, they said, "Let's move the propane tanks away from the building." It seemed to make sense. And then also, the striping at the accessible spaces over here was modified from what was approved. It actually mimics what was there originally. It's all compliant. It doesn't change the usability of the spaces at all. It's just physically, the stripes are a little bit different. That's all. So, that's the summary of the changes. Like I said, we're requesting the board approve these as de minimis changes to the site plan.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments relative to this de minimis change request?
No, Mr. Chair.
No, sir.
I do feel that these are de minimis in nature. Entertain a motion.
I move that we deem the changes at 230 Cherry Street as de minimis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing. New Public Safety Building, Town of Shrewsbury, location 100 to 150 Maple Avenue.
All right, well, Matt's getting set up. Just introduce myself. Good evening. My name's Dan Delaney. I'm an associate and the regional office manager for Boston O'Neill Springfield Office and the engineer of record for the Public Safety Building. That's Matt Salad from Tech Donin. They're the IT guy and a prime architect for the project. And I have with me here Phil Cassidy, who's our landscape architect, just in the event that there's any landscape questions. Neil Joyce, the OPM, as well as some of the building committee members also here this evening. Steve's behind and to my right, if there's any questions there.
Good evening.
And what I'll do is I'll go through, the presentation we had was basically just to start off by kind of going over where we've, how we've progressed to the point where we are today. And then I have some new graphics of the final plans that were submitted to you on June 4. So, I'll go through the progression while we're getting this set up, and then we can go over the plans, and we'll talk to any questions the board may have. And go from there. So, just to kind of walk through, I'll start with the initial submission. We received comments on the original submission, excuse me, on April 29. And from there, we submitted revised site plans, calculations, and documents on May 13. And that was the design that you folks saw at our last meeting that had a pretty substantial change to the stormwater system from what was submitted back in April. So, since then, and at the time when we met, we said, you know, "This is a bigger change, but the changes going forward will be basically minor and will be tweaks to this plan to make it, make sure we address all the comments from both Graves Engineering and from the town engineer." So, since that last meeting, we did meet with the Conservation Commission on May 18. And then after that, after that, following that meeting, the following week, on May 26, we received comments from Andy Truman, the town engineer. And the next day, we received comments from Graves Engineering. So, we had two comment letters for the project. And we took those and prepared responses. And we met with you folks the following week, which was June 3. And that's where, at that meeting, we said, "You know, we're going to be submitting plans tomorrow that address all these comments, and you'll get your copies, and hopefully, we'll be in really good shape." So, we did submit those that day. Late in the day. It was late. But we got them into you folks that day. And then we also had a meeting with Graves and with Mr. Truman to go over their comments on June 9. And what we wanted to do was give them a chance to digest what we had sent in, review their comments, and make sure that we had, you know, we had addressed everything. So, we had a good meeting on June 9. There was a couple of things we talked through, but all in all, neither of them had any follow-on comments, and we're happy with the plans. And shortly after the meeting, at the end of that day on June 9, Graves Engineering submitted a final letter, basically stating that we had addressed a majority of the comments. I believe the board has that June 9 letter. So, that kind of brings us to today. And what I'll do now, I'm going to hop ahead to that site plan. And I'm going to hop up and just point to a couple of the minor changes that were made as part of the comments, just so the board knows what they were. So, for the most part, the footprint of the development, the footprint of the parking, all of those footprints of what we proposed has not, did not change in any substantive way. One change that was made was the shape of this detention basin, bio-retention basin in the corner here. We adjusted the shape to pull it a little bit away from the wetlands. That was a comment from Graves about giving a little additional room for erosion control measures. So, we just tweaked the shape so that we maintain the proper amount of storage, but we can adjust that concern. And it actually, you know, ended up being kind of a cleaner design. So, that was, you know, a really good suggestion. Similarly, we made a change to the front, large bio-retention basin in front of the enclosed police area, police station parking area, the secure parking area, where we added, increased the width of the berm on top so that in the event you needed to maintain it, you could get, you know, a mini excavator or a small piece of equipment up there if you had to go in and clean this out in the future. So, that berm's wide enough so you can do that. We also raised the elevation of the main transformer for the site up to the elevation of the road. Prior to that, we had kind of set it at existing grade, which is about two feet below, a foot and a half, two feet below. And the comment was, you know, "Can we get that up to grade, get it up to the road, and then that way, it's easier for access in the future, and also, you don't have any conditions if that gets wet, you know, after a heavy rain event, you won't have any issues with it." So, in terms of footprint and changes, those were two of the changes there. And then, other than that, the changes really revolved around, on the utility plan, I actually want to hop ahead. I left this slide in here. I know I went over with it, went over it with you on June 3. So, unless there's any questions, I'll hop right ahead to the, do one more. There we go. So, actually, one more utility plan. So, one change that we did make on the utility plan was splitting the water services into a separate fire and water connection all the way to the back to the building. That was a comment from the town engineer. So, in terms of changes to the project, that was probably the only major utility change. There was a question about stormwater modeling, and we did include in the model of this portion of the parking lot, which is, you know, a known flooding issue now, we included modeling this junction and then the pipe heading along the front, you know, the front of the building, just to see how that reacted. And talking to Andy, that was a concern he had, and it was definitely something that, you know, we were aware of. So, the good thing is, is that the addition of this large underground storage area, which takes, you know, probably two-thirds of this parking lot and the bio-retention basin, makes this system much more, or much less prone to flooding. So, it did increase it from, you know, failure between the one- and two-year storm to not failing until the 25-year storm. So, it helps, you know, at the 10-year storm, it's like, it's right there. So, it's definitely an improvement over what's here. I know anecdotally, I haven't seen it myself, but I know that there's flooding on almost a yearly basis, if not more. So, between the changes to how the, you know, the surface flow is gathered in the catch basins and the addition of the underground detention, there should be a sizable, a noticeable increase in performance on that side of the system. So, those were kind of the main changes to the plans. There were a few other changes in terms of NEP coordination, elevations of pipes and things leaving the building, typical stuff that we worked through with Matt and his team. So, when we had made some changes to the site and changes to the building, just making sure those were meshed together. One thing we did want to cover, which I think was a question at the last meeting, was just some construction logistics and just how the site would be used during construction. And any other questions, I'd be happy to answer. I'll just quickly go through these. Fontaine put these together. They're the construction manager on the job. So, this is the existing condition. Obviously, we're right up in here. You have our existing parking lot, existing police station building. And then, when you hop ahead, so the portion of the new construction, this is phased so that, obviously, we don't want to have any temp buildings or any temp police station services. So, the existing police station, there'll be construction fencing around it. The existing police station will be allowed to remain in operation during the construction of the rear parking area or the secure police parking area and the main police, new police building. The two new entrances off of Maple Avenue will be used for construction, limiting, you know, any traffic in here. You know, we all know that there's going to be times when people pull in there just because they have or they know that that's the entrance, and there may be some issues. But Fontaine's, you know, they've committed to making sure they police that and make sure there's subs. And all the folks that work for them know that they're supposed to use these two entrances. There should be, you know, in working with them, there's plenty of area on the western portion of the site for their own staging and contractor parking to not interfere with the construction of the building. And then, you can hop ahead, one more, Matt. One other thing to note here, too, is we also met with the building department, the fire department and the police chief to make sure that they were comfortable with that fence line. It's about 10 to 15 feet away from the existing police station, and they found that that was adequate amount of room in case of any emergency where they had to service that part of the police station. And then, all the gates have been coordinated with the fire department for access, both during and after hours. Okay, and then this is sort of the last, the last phase of the site work, and then the demolition of the existing, the existing police station. So, once this portion of the building is operational, you'll have the ability for police vehicles and all their own vehicles to get in to the rear secure parking lot. So, the fencing will remain, and the public entrance to the parking, to the new police station will be accessible both through the new driveway, which will have limited capacity, obviously. And then, I believe we're doing the temporary walk from the existing parking lot so that, you know, the public can enter the new police station. And then, this building will be demolished. And once the building's demolished, then that remainder of the parking lot will be constructed because that parking, you know, the work in that parking lot will have an impact, obviously, on this building and the access to the new police station. So, that work will be done once that building's completely demolished. And then, we did want to include this one slide in here. There was something that came up at a previous meeting, just about the design for the light fixtures and the fact that they're all Doc Scott compliant. They are going to be managed through an overall smart dimmable system. Matt and his team have been working pretty extensively with the building committee on the needs for that, so. The last thing I did want to bring up, I don't know, Matt, you want to head, just jump back to the layout plan real quick? I just want to hit on the potential for the temp access or the emergency access. So, we've been meeting with town staff and the building committee about the potential for an emergency access at the rear of the site that connects through the very northern part of the ball fields to the road at the ball fields. And that's something that we're working on some options. We had a meeting on it today, and it's going to be before the building committee on Monday, on the 21st. If it moves forward, the design will be to use either grass pave or a turf grid, basically, a fully pervious pavement structure, and it'll be emergency use only. So, something that would only be used in the event that there's a blockage of this, you know, whether somebody damages the gate, something serious would have to happen here because there is no connection, no second connection out of there. So, it's something that they've been talking about on and off for a bit. We should get final direction on Monday. But it will be, like I said, a totally pervious design with the intent to make it, you know, basically, just integrate right into the grass that's already over there. And we would come back, obviously, for what we would hope would be a de minimis change in the event that that, that they want to move forward. We think they probably will, but we won't have full direction until the building committee meeting on Monday. And that's all I had. I'd be happy to take questions or...
Very good. Anyone on the board have any questions? Perna?
No questions from my side.
Tim?
No questions.
Steve?
I'm all set.
Jay?
No questions.
Just one general question. What are you expecting for the timeframe for the demolition of the existing police building?
That would probably be somewhere around a year from next February.
And how long, from the start of the demolition till the parking is all corrected in front of the building?
I want to say three to six months.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand for the access to the, to the new building, how that's going to be. So, very good. That's all the questions I have. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? See, this is much better now because I can look for hands, okay? Seeing no hands raised, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the new police station site plan approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed. Okay, we do have a draft decision in front of us. It's pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions relative to the draft decision?
My only question is, do we have, we don't have to vote on the parking waiver individually, do we? This is just site plan approval. This is...
You need to mention it at some point.
I will mention it in the, I'll mention it in the motion.
In the board, there was a, we have a requirement for parking over a certain number of parking spaces. It requires 5% to be interior landscaping. They hit about the 4.8% mark, so, pretty close. But given that the, as described by the engineers in the letter to us for the waiver, it was to kind of smush the site more together, so we had more space to create more wooded areas towards Maple Ave. So, I recommended it. I thought it was a reasonable request.
Anybody else have any questions relative to the decision?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute a decision entitled, "Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Approval, 10150 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury Police Station, Town of Shrewsbury, Permit Number SPA-10-2021," and as well as we grant the request by the applicant for a waiver relative to the size of the parking lot and the amount of requisite landscaping.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Individually anymore.
All right, that's right. We don't have to do the individuals anymore, all right? Okay. You are all set to go. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
Our next item of business is South Street Falcon Farms Nine Lot Subdivision, definitive subdivision. We received a notice that, from the applicant, to continue this hearing to our next public hearing. So, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the applicant's request for an extension of his definitive subdivision application until Thursday, July 1 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Our next item of business, Mr. Rotolakis will again recuse himself for. We actually have two public hearings that we're going to run concurrent because they are co-dependent. It's for the Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan Development Special Permit, location 384, 3, excuse me, 384, 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike, as well as Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan Development Site Plan Approval. Again, location 384, 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike. The applicant's present.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject.
Yes.
Dino Iliadi is here.
Oh, I apologize, yes. Mr. Iliadi? Mr. Iliadi, please, he will sit in for the special permit portion. Thank you. My apologies.
No, that's all right.
Well, getting back to normal here.
I know.
All right, we're all set.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm very happy to be back in person. My name's Todd Mori. I'm with Deals Associates. We're here representing the folks from North Bridge Partners, and Owen Hall and Brian Orr from North Bridge with me. Also, this evening, I have Rebecca Brown from Greeman Peterson, our traffic consultant, as well as Devin Howe, from our office as well. He's one of the design engineers that we have. So, what I'd like to do tonight, we had talked about really trying to focus on traffic tonight, and I'd like to do that. But I'd like to take about five minutes and just run through a couple of things that we've put together site-wise, and then I will stop talking and stop hoarding the meeting, and I'll let Rebecca go through the traffic, and then we can go from there.
Very good.
I believe everybody's familiar with where the site is. We've talked about this at a few other meetings. We have, at the last meeting, we looked at a couple of different changes, one to Building A and one to Building B. And essentially, what we had looked at with Building A is creating a couple of wing walls on the edge of it. We call those California pumps, and making sure they surrounded the loading areas in there. We also expanded the parking out a little bit to try to increase the marketability of the site to some different, to different types of tenants that may be interested in this property. The other thing that we had showed you, and this is not reflective of it, but we'd actually flipped Building B. So, we put the loading over here on this side and parking on this side. More market feedback continues to come in. I think we also got some feedback from the town, as well as some of the planning board members. They preferred it oriented this way, so we're, we'll go back to that, and we'll do that there. But I think what, one of the things that we're going to want to change is the planting that we had along here. We had it set up kind of as a, almost some boulevard landscaping, some hardwoods spaced fairly uniformly through varying hardwood species. I think what I'd like to do is that I'd like to change that and increase the density of it and put those as a series of evergreen plantings, so. On a lot of projects recently, we've been doing a mix of red, white, and blue spruce. They grow very well together, provide a very dense green, so I'd like to, we're probably going to change that. That's really the only, only difference on the site plan that we have for you. Again, Building A, Building B, that's a little bit zoomed in more. One of the questions that we did get, and we hear a lot on projects like this, is, "Why'd you orient it the way you did? Why didn't you flip it? Why didn't you rotate it? Why didn't you make it smaller? You should have done that." This is what this will look like. So, we, basically what I did, and this is a very simple version of it. I didn't do the fancy detailed drawing. So, I just basically traced the outline of this building, including the loading area that we'd need, and rotated it 90 degrees, and that's what you get. What we found was that if we tried to do something like that, you can see we're extending quite a ways down here in the wetlands. Similar is down here on Building B. If we rotated it, we got it in the hair a little bit, into the wetlands on both sides. Why don't we make the building smaller? Well, it's actually very simple. The project and the property requires a certain economic return and a certain economic impact. And you can see that if you look at the last project that was proposed on this. It had buildings scattered, I think, some District A is up and through here, as well as portions down in this area, and then some District B was also peppered with buildings. They came up with about 450 to 475,000 square feet of buildings, which resulted in, I think, between three and four times the amount of traffic that we're showing here. So, we actually shrunk it quite a bit. We have 50% less on the buildings. We're down to about, right around 300,000, and our traffic, like I mentioned, is somewhere between a quarter and a third of what they had projected. So, that's why we didn't flip it. That's why we didn't shrink it. And that's, we knew what we had to get in there for footprints, just to make this a viable project. So, we moved these. We did a lot of work with, with the folks from North Bridge, as well as their architectural designers moving buildings all over the site. What you don't see is you don't see the prior 10 iterations, somewhere along that. So, one of those iterations did look kind of like these orange boxes, too. It's just not a practical way of doing it.
can see? I know we're used to sharing the screen so everyone can see if they're home, but...
Is this just slow?
Um, I don't know. You want to try standing on the other side and see if the work is still...
It took a little while.
Yeah, actually, if you stand right there, can everyone see all right? I just want to make sure everyone can see. All right, okay.
So we did two cross-sections through here. One, through this area of Building A, there was a lot of discussion about the trucks and what you would see, and we realized we put the California bump back there, but we took the cross-section out in front of it. So, this, the building doesn't screen this area down here, this outside of the actual loading area. And we also did a similar cross-section from Building B back up towards South Street. One of the things you'll notice, this is the one from Building A, looking back up towards the Thomas Farms Circle neighborhood. We come across, we have the trucks down here, as I said, they're outside of the influence of that building bump, which actually happens here. So when they back up and they're in there loading, they're completely hidden behind it. But as they drive in, there is an area where they do peek out, and that will be represented by this area here. So as you come across, coming across this area here, you see we have a wetland area that's actually got some fairly mature growth through it, that's in this blue area here, and then the grain starts to rise up towards the back of the Thomas Farms Circle residences. There's a mixture of hardwoods and evergreens in there. We have heard the comments that the, in the winter months, a lot of the leaf drop creates a pretty good view corridor through there. That's what that cross-section looks like. For good idea, Cross Section B, this area through the wetlands is a little bit different. This wetland is a different type of wetland. It's not a forested wetland. It's more of a scrub meadow that grew up from the old farm fields, and you can see there's a much greater distance, too. This area up in here is where I had talked about changing the landscape factors through there. So, these will be, as I said, we'll send you this PowerPoint presentation so you'll have these for record. That's really all I have to present site-wise tonight. So with the board's permission, I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
Before I forget my question. So, not that, I understand all the species that are out there, but are the trees that you're proposing, are they certainly Asian longhorn beetles?
They absolutely are.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for flipping that building back, too.
Yes.
Looking in?
I can or I didn't know if you had this on your computer, too.
Good evening, everyone. Just for the record, my name is Rebecca Brown. I'm here from Greeman Peterson, and I'm going to try and stay out of everyone's way, but given that this is my first opportunity to stand up during a meeting in the last year and a half, I'm going to take advantage of that. So we did prepare a traffic impact and access study for this project, and I'll walk you through some of the details of that traffic study and what the results of that were, but I just, kind of going in reverse a little bit today, I wanted to start by just touching on a few of the findings of the traffic study, and then I'll get into a little bit more of the details of some of it with you. So our traffic study did include an evaluation of both the safety of the surrounding area roadway network, as well as the proposed driveways, as well as an analysis of the traffic impacts on the surrounding area roadways as well. And in general, what we found was that both of the site driveways that are proposed on South Street and on Route 20 had sightlines that exceeded the ASHTO recommendations for safe operations, so both of them were safe. We also found that in general, the majority of the study area intersections had crash rates that were at or below the statewide and district-wide averages. One of the exceptions to that was the Route 9 and South Street intersection that was previously identified as a high-crash location and had a road safety audit that was conducted as part of another, a previous development of this site. There was a road safety audit that was done there to evaluate some low-cost and short-term measures that could be implemented to improve safety at that intersection, and many of those have actually already been implemented since that road safety audit was conducted. We also collected traffic volumes for this study in a pre-COVID condition and projected those out using extremely conservative assumptions out to a seven-year design horizon, and I'll walk you through in a minute about how that was actually done. And as you know, this site was part of a previous review, which Todd touched on a little bit a moment ago, that went through MEPA permitting for a 450,000-square-foot development that was actually anticipated to generate quite a bit more traffic than what is currently proposed. So what we're proposing now on the site is estimated to generate about 70% less traffic than what was previously approved. As a result of that, we would anticipate much lower impacts on the surrounding area roadway network than that previously approved project. As a result, when we look at the traffic operations at the study area roadways, we saw very minimal increases in delay at any of the intersections, where it was a maximum increase of 11 seconds per vehicle going through any of the study area intersections, and limited increases in queues as well, ranging from anywhere from two to four vehicle increases in queues at any of the study area intersections. To help further reduce the traffic that would be generated by the project, there are a number of transportation demand management measures that are also proposed that include things on-site, including installation of bicycle racks on-site, providing internal sidewalk networks, and connections out to the existing sidewalk network on South Street as well, and also partnering with new rides and mass rides to encourage carpooling and ride-share whenever possible to access the site as well for the employees. And then in addition to the transportation demand management, there would also be, we anticipate a post-occupancy monitoring study that would be done to verify the amount of traffic that is being generated, to make sure that it's consistent with the traffic study that was prepared, and that the impacts that it creates are also consistent with the traffic study as well. So the study area that we looked at for this traffic impact study was consistent with the traffic impact study that was done for the original development known as Centec North or Centec Park North, and you can see those study area intersections here. So, here is the site located right here. You can see Route 20 or Hartford Street kind of running diagonally across the page. Route 9 is running along the side over here, and kind of north in relation to this is pointing towards me. So north is kind of heading towards my direction, and here's South Street running through here. So the intersections that we looked at included the intersection of Route 20 and South Street, the intersection of Centec Boulevard and Cherry Street, the UMass and Charles River Laboratory driveways on South Street, Route 9 and South Street, and then each of the intersections within the interchange at Route 9 and 140 as well. We're all studied as part of it. And again, that was consistent with the traffic impact studies that were done as part of the Centec Park North development. So how we projected the traffic volumes as part of this study, I mentioned that those traffic volumes were collected in a pre-COVID condition. So we actually used the traffic volumes that were originally collected by MDM as part of the traffic impact studies for the Centec North development. So those were collected back in October of 2018 and October of 2019. So the 2019 ones were the ones that were collected at the Route 140 and Route 9 interchange, and the remaining intersections were all collected back in 2018. And then we grew those traffic volumes out at 0.5% per year out to a 2028 condition. And that 0.5% per year came from reviewing historic traffic volume counts in the surrounding area, which actually showed a much lower growth, and in some cases, a decrease in traffic volumes in the surrounding area. So what we found was that traffic volumes were growing at about 0.07%. So to be conservative, we grew them out at 0.5% per year out to that 2028 condition. Then we added traffic from a number of other development projects, which are all listed here, and included the Point at Hills Farm, Charles River Laboratories, and the UMass Office, which at the time that the traffic counts were collected, both of those were at reduced occupancy, so we did account for the additional development, the additional occupancy of those developments. And then Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond and the Village at Grafton Woods as well. So we included all the traffic from those developments, which also increased the traffic on the surrounding roadways by about 16 to 17% beyond that 0.5% growth rate. So then the next step was to add our site-generated traffic on top of those traffic volumes, the 2028 traffic volumes. And this graphic here is just showing the previously proposed development for that 450,000-square-foot office R&amp;D development and what that site was proposed to generate. The next column here is showing you what our site that's currently proposed with the mix of warehouse and office is proposed to generate. And then the last one is just showing you kind of the net change in comparison. So on a daily basis, we would anticipate generating a little bit under 800 daily trips. And again, one trip is either one vehicle entering the site or one vehicle exiting the site. So every car that comes to the site during the day will make two trips, one when they enter, one when they leave. So we're really talking about just under 400 vehicles that would be coming to and from the site throughout the entire day. And when we're looking at peak hour impacts, it would be just under 100 vehicles in either the morning peak hour or the evening peak hour, with the majority of the vehicles being entering in the morning and then exiting in the afternoon as those employees are coming and going from the site. And again, that represents about a 70% reduction in comparison to what was previously proposed on the site. And as I mentioned, we also did a review of the sightlines at the site driveways, and you can see here from this figure that's showing essentially as you're exiting each site driveway, looking in either direction, the adequate sightlines that are provided at each of those site driveways as well. And you can see here in the couple of blue areas that run along the roadway, that those represent areas of clearing of vegetation that would be required, or making sure that those areas remain clear of any signage, or landscaping that might be proposed as part of the site plan to ensure that those sightlines can be maintained over time. But we do meet ASHTO recommendations for sightlines in both directions. So that is essentially what we did for our traffic study and what the results of it did show. So if there are specific questions that you have, I can get into more details on any parts of it that you might want to see.
Anyone on the board have any specific questions relative to this particular presentation?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Compared to previous proposals for this site, this certainly has less impacts. My only concern, as I have raised in the past relating to traffic, is any trucks, I mean cars, I guess you can, heading east on Route 20, you can take left onto south and left onto your driveway. So that is easy, but any bigger vehicles that can't take, can't get into the parking lot from the South Street entrance, if they have to take left into your site, how is that possible, given the Route 20 traffic is really, especially during rush hours, is unbelievable, you know? So, just, I mean, I don't have any solution for that, but I just want to know your thoughts on that, you know?
Sure. Yeah, so, actually, if I go back to the location, a little too far. So this map does kind of show the site in relation to the surrounding area network, and you can kind of tell from here how a lot of the traffic might get to and from the site. So we do anticipate that the truck traffic that's coming to the site, whenever possible, will try to make right-hand turns. So vehicles will be able to come out of the site, come along Route 20 and get to the Route 140 interchange, and from there, get out to other highways. Coming into the site, they certainly can use Route 20 and take the left-hand turn in, but they also have the opportunity, if they wanted to, to come through the Route 9 interchange and come down South Street, taking a right-hand turn onto Route 20 and then a right-hand turn into the site. And what's not shown on this diagram here is the Route 20 and Route 9 interchange that is a little bit further to the east as well, that provides another opportunity for them to get onto Route 20 and to be able to make a right-hand turn into the site. During off-peak times, we would anticipate that the majority of them will be able to make that left-hand turn just fine. For warehouse development, they do typically try to schedule their deliveries during off-peak hours as well. Majority of the truck traffic happens before 3:00 PM. You don't get a ton of truck traffic that will happen after 3:00 PM for these types of uses. So we would anticipate that a lot of that will happen before the PM peak hour, when traffic can get pretty heavy along Route 20. But during those peak hours, if a truck does need to arrive, they have options with those interchanges to be able to get around and make a right-hand turn instead of a left-hand turn.
So, at our last meeting, I had brought up, have the proponents spoken to Mass DOT yet to find out?
Yes, actually, I meant to mention that. So we have scheduled a meeting for June 22nd with Mass DOT, and we have invited the town to also attend that meeting. So we will be meeting with them to talk about the access, as well as we will be required to file a notice of project change with the MEPA office. So their MEPA coordinator will be at that meeting as well to talk about the scope of what will be involved from a traffic perspective at that meeting.
So, based on your prior experience, would you say that if Mass DOT limits the access, no left turn, for instance, or some of that effect from any particular area, how much will that affect your overall traffic calculations as far as the impacts where that might arise?
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate that it would have much of an impact on our traffic operations. We did assume that it would be a full access driveway, but if they do restrict left turns there in terms of truck traffic coming around, there's only a handful of truck trips during any peak hour. So we're only talking about changes of two to three vehicles that might go through a different intersection if we have to eliminate truck traffic. In terms of the other vehicles, the one intersection that it may impact would be the South Street and Route 20 intersection, because now those vehicles that would be turning left into the site would continue up and make a left-hand turn at South Street and come in, I'm talking about passenger vehicles, so employee trips, would come up to the South Street driveway and take that left-hand turn in instead. And then vehicles, again, that want to head back out would probably use the South Street driveway and then take the left-hand turn at Route 20. So that would be one intersection that we would probably want to reevaluate. The remaining intersections likely would not be significantly impacted by that change.
I envisioned there's going to be a lot of questions about, from the public anyways, based on prior hearings that we've had. Not having that answer right now is going to be problematic, I think, in terms of trying to get closer to a closure as far as how the traffic patterns are going to be. And not that you're required to do this, but has a tenant specifically been identified yet, so it can be helpful for some of the other questions?
I can answer that, and I'm not sure if you guys can hear me here, but a tenant has not been identified at this point, so it's still...
In terms of the other vehicles, the one intersection that it it may impact would be the South Street and Route 20 intersection, because now those vehicles that would be turning left into the site would continue up and make a left hand turn at South Street and come in. I'm talking about passenger vehicles, so employee trips would come up to the South Street driveway and take that left hand turn in instead. And then vehicles, again, that want to head back out would probably use the South Street driveway and then take the left hand turn at Route 20. So that would be one intersection that we would probably want to reevaluate. The remaining intersections likely would not be significantly impacted by that change.
I I envisioned there's going to be a lot of questions about, from the public anyways, based on prior hearings that we've had. Not having that answer right now is 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 going to be problematic, I think, in terms of trying to get closer to a closure as far as how the traffic patterns are going to be. And and not that you're required to do this, but has a tenant specifically been identified yet, so it can be helpful for some of the other questions?
I can answer that, and I'm not sure if you guys can hear me here, but a tenant has not been identified at this point. So it's still aspect development.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before, oh, you can continue on with the board for this section. I think before we get to the public comments, we do have the town's peer reviewer, the planning board's peer reviewer, just to make sure we give him a chance to offer his comments overview. We're not going to go through every little detail, but don't want to forget that. Go ahead, Jay, I'm sorry.
Tim next.
Yeah, Mr. Rao really brought up, I think, the main question for me, I think, clearly turning left, traveling east on Route 20 is is the major traffic issue here. I appreciate that there's other ways to get around the site. I think practically people driving trucks are not going to want to waste the time to do that. So I have some concerns, but I sort of agree with you that until we hear where DOT is on this, it's difficult to really go too much further.
My question was also the twenty and South Street intersection, how trucks would take a left there. And if there's, and I don't think that this project is part of that, but if there's been any discussion about where twenty and South Street meet, widening that area of the road where South and 20 meet, where it would be easier for trucks maybe to get another lane on South or on 20 to take a left in or a right out, has there been any discussion of that?
Yeah, so as part of the Route 20 corridor study, so Mass DOT currently has a corridor study that's in the preliminary design phases along Route 20 that actually extends through the entirety of the study area that you should see on this map. And they are proposing widening along Route 20 that would include two lanes in each direction as well as turning lanes at each of the individual intersections. And as part of that, they are proposing widening on South Street as well to provide two lanes coming out of South Street onto Route 20. The previous proposal for Centec Park North did have some widening, widening to provide a dedicated right turn lane on South Street, southbound onto Route 20 that would be required once they met specific thresholds for volume that would be generated. So essentially, they would be able to, the site was divided into two districts, split by the the wetlands that run through the site, and they could develop essentially half of their development before they would need to install that right turn. Based on the traffic volumes that we are anticipated to generate with us being seventy percent less, we don't expect that we will trigger that threshold. But certainly, we will be meeting with Mass DOT next week and getting their opinion on whether they would also agree with that or if they would want that to be constructed sooner.
I have one other question, too, and I don't know if this is pertains to you or not, but the internal traffic of the, this just came up since they flipped the building back the other way. I don't remember, maybe I couldn't see it well enough, but how the internal traffic on the site is going to be now, because I know the road was on one side, because you flipped the building and then now you flipped it back, is it going to change? I don't know if this pertains to traffic or, I don't know.
No, let me describe it without, I'll try to do it without the site plan. If we need the site plan, I'll plug it back in. So if you're coming off of Route 20, you would you would enter up through, you have the small building to your right as you come in. And then as you proceed up towards what I was calling Building B.
Correct.
Traffic, truck traffic and any traffic that was headed towards Building A would peel off to the right.
Correct.
Passenger cars that, employee vehicles, if you for at Building B would continue on and then park on the west side of Building B. So the truck traffic and the traffic heading towards Building A, trucks would either load at Building B or they would continue on across the wetland crossing up towards Building A. And again, once they got across the wetland crossing, trucks would take a left into the loading area, cars would continue up and to the right to the the parking area. So if you can visualize that.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've doubled the state in the past, then how would the widening of Route 20, I mean, you have, for the state, you have to give your firstborn for them to do anything. The widening of Route 20, how is this going to coincide with the project here?
So we don't yet know what the timing of that project is, so it is in the preliminary design phase. So there has not been funding established for for when that would actually be constructed. We do anticipate that that would happen soon. It would be established for when that project would actually get constructed. I did mention that there are a number of other developments that are coming in the surrounding area with Edgemere Crossing and the Village at Grafton Woods as well. We do anticipate that those projects would likely be constructing pieces of that mitigation or of that Route 20 corridor improvement as mitigation for their developments based on the impacts that they create at some of the intersections. So some of those improvements may come a little bit piecemeal as development happens and then it would get constructed as the remaining portions as a whole as part of the DOT project.
And Route 20 is not very easy to walk, I mean, it's a solid rock underneath.
I I might be reading something different into your question. The site plan is taking into account the potential widening of Route 20? So in other words, if you're going to build it up to the line and then Route 20 wants to go this way, are we are we planning for that, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Understood.
Okay. I don't believe we have any other questions for the moment, but we're going to listen to the Mr. Finland for the peer review comments. We have questions for for him, and then we'll open up the public comment, and then it will be for both of the traffic study and the peer review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Stephen Finland. I'm a senior project manager at McMahon Associates, and we are a transportation engineering and planning firm. We do peer reviews on behalf of municipalities, but we also do projects in a little of this, so better be understanding what to look for. Really, our role for this project is to do a full peer review of all the information that is submitted by the applicant, including the site plans, the traffic study, and to look at to make sure that everything that's being submitted is in compliance with the town bylaws. And what we do is identify any concerns that we have, what we call issues, and present those in writing to the applicant, and we work with the applicant to identify these issues. So the number that we establish when we first start our review, get those down so we're all at a happy place and we're all, you know, we're satisfied with the concerns that we have have been addressed. I'd also like to mention that our services are also paid for by the applicant, so there's no additional cost for paid for by the town. I just wanted to mention that. So with that being said, we did receive the information. We went through a thorough peer review, looked at all the town bylaws and reviewed the site plans, the traffic study that was presented here tonight. And we looked at all the issues ranging from the study area to safety to traffic volumes, everything that was sort of touched on tonight. And we identified the issues that I mentioned. So we identified 25 issues that we included in a letter that was dated June 8th that was submitted to the board, that hopefully all the board members do have and have reviewed. If the board wants, if you want me to quickly go through those tonight or if you want to just?
I think on a high level, I think.
High level, okay. Yeah, and I'd also like to mention that we did present this, submit this information to the town on June 8th. We did have a meeting earlier this week with the applicant, with Rebecca and their team to kind of talk about these issues. At that time, we didn't see any real pushback in any of the issues. So they're going to look at the letter in detail, they're going to respond formally back to our responses. And it was talked earlier about the Mast dot meeting happening on June 22nd. So as we discussed at our meeting, we don't anticipate anything before that meeting. We'll sort of see what happens at the meeting with Mast dot to understand what's coming from them as well and how that may impact some of the concerns that we do have. So just quickly, like I said, I I won't go through all the 25 issues in detail, but I did want to touch on some of these. The study area that was identified here earlier, if you noticed, the the Route 140, Route 20 intersection is not included as part of their study area. So we've asked the applicant to look at that, to see how many additional trips are going to be added to that intersection and possibly need to include that intersection and see what percentage may be impacting that. So they're going to go back and they're going to look at what's there today, what's being projected for the future, and then add on any of their additional trips and see if that is something that needs to be included. So that's something that we identified. We did look at the traffic volumes. We concurd mostly with how they did a lot of their traffic volume counts. It was done pre-COVID, which was good. We did have just one question on how some of the information was done at the UMass campus, how those counts were done, if it was done with typical peak hours, which was on the roadway. So they're going to look at that one, but we're hoping that that doesn't create any issues with the peak hours that they've identified. We looked at some of the seasonal factors that are typically done to take the existing conditions to the no build conditions that's projected out and then what you do after your no build is add on the peak hour, the trips that are generated by your project. And what you do to that, you you apply some what we call peak hour fact, some of the seasonal factors, excuse me, that are sort of applied to get you to that point. So we just had a question about looking at some of the information that was available by Mast, so they're going to look at that as well. The Route 9 South Street intersection was mentioned earlier. We did identify that. We did notice that the crash rates were higher than average at that intersection. So we've asked the applicant, we understand there was an RSA that was done. They did identify some short term measures as well as long term measures. So we were just wondering if they could look at what's proposed and how quickly those can be implemented as part of that project. So when this project does come along, that those are implemented. So we did ask them to look at that, so they're going to just try to get an answer for that when they meet with the Mast dot folks next week. We also looked at safety at the Route 20 Centec Boulevard as well as the Route 9 westbound and Route 9 connector westbound roadway. We've noticed that some of those crash rates were a little bit higher. So we've asked them to look at, see if there was anything that could be done at those to maybe reduce some of those crashes, potentially if that was with intersections. So they're going to look at that as well. The site distance was talked a little bit about by the applicant that was presented here tonight. They, the the site distance measurements that were done, we also wanted to look at, since there will be trucks out here, we wanted to make sure that some of the site distance will work with trucks as well as with passenger cars. So they're going to look at that a little bit more in detail, maybe update some of the figures that they've done to address that and make sure that everything is in compliance with what's required for the ASHTO standards. So they're going to do that as well. Talked about background growth. We did ask, in terms of the background growth, we know that there's a proposed project that's happening at the UPS facility in Grafton. So we know that's sort of being talked about, so we've asked them, we asked them if that's something that needed to be included in their background growth rate. They looked into that. My understanding is nothing's formally been filed for that. So they're a little bit ahead of them, so that if that is in the project, that can be included, so. But they're going to continue to monitor that. What will probably happen is anything that's done as part of this project will be needed to taken into account when they do their project. So that was something that we did look at. The next few comments had to do with trip generation and how the proposed trips were being calculated by the project, mostly had to do with some of the, what we call the Institute of Transportation Engineer, the I T E manual, and how they use certain land use codes for some of their uses. So we've asked them to kind of use some of the approaches that were done in some of those and make sure that everything does measure up with what's being proposed in their in their traffic study. The peak hours, they did present a window of what the peak hours would be, but we're specifically asked what the specific peak hour would be. If it's a seven fifteen, eight fifteen in the morning, or if it's a four fifteen, four five fifteen in the afternoon. So that's information they're going to present to us that wasn't in the traffic study. The next few comments have to do with the traffic analysis that was really done, was done as part of the project. A lot of these had to do with really methodology and just for the public's information is when you do a project like this, you take all the numbers and you plug it into what we call a synchro software, it basically runs all the numbers and it gives, and it spits out all the results. And there's a lot of things that go into that in terms of what you're plugging in for data. I mentioned the seasonal factors earlier, peak hour factors, that gets weighed in. So we've asked them to clarify some of the methodology that was used for that synchro analysis. And when we talked about on Monday, I think there was maybe eight comments related to the analysis itself that they're going to look at. And some of those had to do with things that sort of inputted into the system if you have it, if it's a right turn or it's it's not a controlled right turn, things like that that may affect your overall analysis and your results. And that's really what we look at at the end of the day is how it's going to operate at those intersections in terms of the analysis. So that was something that we've asked them to do. And we also asked them to look at the Route 9 and the South Street intersection, I think it was been talked about tonight. They did present level of service results for that, and level of service is looked at from an A to an F, sort of like school, you know? If you get an A, it's great, but if it's an F, it's it's not good. So some of the results that we were seeing, some of the approaches were showing F, but the overall was an E, which is acceptable. So we've asked them to look at just the analysis as a whole to see if there's things that maybe could be done to improve some of those approaches that are operating a level of service at and still have the intersection as a whole work satisfactorily. So they've agreed to look at that and and they'll do that and come back with some of the revised results. Next, the last four comments had to do with the site plans. I think was talked about earlier, the internal circulation. We did look at that. We just asked them to provide some type of signage for the employee only in the truck entrances, so those are clearly designated on the plan, so there's no confusion that they're all, you know, going to where they're not supposed to be because there will be trucks on the site. We also had them, we've asked them to look at the deliveries and operation plan to see how a delivery truck or emergency vehicle will access the site. So what you'll typically do for that is you run what we call a turning movement diagram, you take a truck, a fire truck or a certain sized delivery truck, and you run it through the site to make sure it's not bumping any curves or it's not hitting anything on its way. So they're going to be doing that to satisfy our concern on that. We asked about the dumpster location, didn't see that clearly designated on the plan, so they're going to look at that information and provide that. And the last plan we had, excuse me, the last comment we had had to do with the site lighting. They did propose site lighting on the on the plan, so we looked at that and we just want to make sure that that's going to be stamped and signed by a professional engineer to make sure that that's something that's really been looked at. So so in summary, like I said, Mr. Chairman and board members, we have looked at this in detail with compared to the town bylaws, we've identified those 25 issues. Some of those issues, like I mentioned, have to do with some of the Mast dot coordination. So depending on how that goes, but we'll continue to work with the applicant and their team and hopefully get these issues resolved. Also here to listen to the public tonight, too, to hear some of their concerns as well. So thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions specific to the peer review?
No.
Thank you. All right. So this is a public hearing. This is going to be easier to do versus being at home. So does anyone in the public wish to be heard? Yes, please identify yourself. Whoa, sorry. I I I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Did you raise your hand? See, it's not as easy as it looks. It's okay. Mr. Singer.
Okay, sorry.
No worries.
David Singer, 400 South Street. I had a couple of comments prepared pre-meeting. I have a couple of comments based on Ms. Brown's presentation. First of all, I'd like to point out to the board, anybody that knows that area, the the biggest issues around there don't really happen at the main intersections, they happen in between the main intersections, like South Street and Route 20, like Dunkin' Donuts and Route 20, like the Fiori's in that area and Route 20. Mostly the incidents actually take place in between, in between the intersections. The intersection is actually the most sanest place of all of of all of these places, so that's something that needs to be reevaluated. I'd also like to say, and I live right on South Street in between Route 9 and Route 20, I see Chestnut Street, which is the main avenue that leads up to the UMass Memorial Campus. That needs to be studied as well because there's an awful lot of traffic that flows down off of Chestnut Street onto Route 20 at the Route 20 side of of the intersection. I can tell you for a fact that there's a lot of accidents there, there's a lot of near accidents there. Cars coming off of Chestnut Street do not have a very good sightline of cars coming up off of Route 20 up heading north onto South Street towards Route 9. What cars need to then do is jut out of Chestnut Street, so cars coming up South Street have to come this way, and the amount of potential head-on accidents that happen there are almost daily. So I think that that has to be taken into effect. I don't know when the sightline review was taken, but I can tell you, anybody that drives that road between June, even five days ago and today, there's been an amazing amount of brush that has grown in and the sightline is just continuously being affected, so I'm not really sure when that was taken. But I can tell you right now, it's extremely difficult to even look a hundred yards in any direction. So that might want to be, you know, figured out when that that site review was taken. They talked about trucks possibly going around and using Route 9 and then taking a right hand turn onto South Street, carrying on to Route 20, and then a right hand turn into the facility. Anybody that's ever seen an eighteen wheeler try and take a right hand turn onto South Street from eastbound Route 9, it's probably more difficult than Route 20 onto that site as well. It's an extremely difficult place. I invite anybody to stand in my front yard and watch as these eighteen wheelers come barreling down from South Street, from Route 9 to Route 20. Price Chopper is a very active supermarket, there's an awful lot of truck traffic that comes down there, there's an awful lot of trailers, there's comes down there, there's an awful lot of trailers, there's a lot of box, uh, box trucks that, that use that as well. I swear when a landscaping trailer is coming down the street, each and every one of them separated and landed in my front yard. There's a lot of shaking, there's a lot of noise, there's an awful lot of truck noise as it exists. To imagine flow greater than what it is, is a little bit scary. I'm hoping that MassDOT June 22 meeting is public, so we'll figure that one out. Anybody familiar with it knows that there's really no funding still available, no timetable to do it. And as the gentleman, I'm not sure his name pointed out, there's really not a lot of space there, so to develop within the property, there's no development to allow for bicycle riding, pedestrians and things like that now or really in the near future, no matter how many meetings that we go to. Sight lighting, I can address probably at the next meeting because the flipping of the building, which is a relief to the Thomas Farms people, now again becomes a huge issue to arrebutting property that doesn't have the same buffer, the same barriers, and especially when the, the leaves are down, we have a clear naked view of that entire property. So the, the repositioning again of the building is a major concern, came as a surprise tonight, so I wasn't really prepared to comment on that. For my other comments, if Mr. Cahill could be so kind, I had shared this before with the, with the board on the Zoom meetings, I don't know if he can get that up there for me, but it has to do with the traffic that exists on Route 20. It'll be a lot easier if, if we can get that up there. Apologize. I would like to take this time to congratulate the planning board on being the first in-person meeting with the cancellation of conservation on Tuesdays to kind of get, you know, bragging rights. I showed up on Tuesday, the building's locked, nobody told me the building was, you know, the meeting was canceled and trying to get online. Mr. Stone finally let me know on Wednesday that there was nothing to fear. I like the planning board better anyway.
Is this the one you wanted?
Yeah, there's, there's two similar shots that I had sent. I also did my own kind of independent track fit survey in 2019 because I was concerned about what other surveys might say. MDM did a great job. This was a Google shot that I took. This was either on June 3rd or June 24th. I have two of them. I had a picture taken as well, I have them here. And it shows at, these were on a Monday afternoon in, 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 in early June at 5:14 and also at 5:35. These were taken off of Google screenshots. Anybody that travels that's familiar with Google screenshots and Google traffic knows the darker the red, the higher and slower and more congested the volume. Two Google screenshots show that on Route 20 from South Street, heading west on Route 20 all the way up to the Cherry Street intersection, every day is backed up. I know, so there was a gentleman called in at the last meeting that sits in that traffic. It's a good 10 to 15 minute ride sometimes from South Street up to just, up to just Centec. I sit in my back porch in the middle of summer watching the traffic and the, and the trucks inching along. Left-hand turns, coming out onto Route 20, they're dangerous in light traffic. It becomes dangerous, nearly impossible if you can see trying to cross two lanes.
Excuse me, Mr. Singer, I don't think we can talk about left-hand turns because I think MassDOT is probably going to have some ability to impact whether that's going to happen. So rather than going down that, we, we're not going to have the answers for that, so if we can skip past that, that would appreciate that.
That's fine. So, so going on to, to the next point, with the traffic is also anybody that knows and living in that area that, that South Street is a major emergency route from center of town to anywhere along that Route 20, you know, barrier. I can tell you in normal times and even now, the amount of sirens on a daily basis that come by my house, I don't know where they're going to, I'm assuming either some type of an accident, some type of an issue, more of an accident. If this year continues to, to grow, I imagine the increased rate of accidents will happen and thankfully the bus truck accident on Route 20 a couple of months ago wasn't fatal and it was only what it was, but I, I'm just scared to think of what else might happen there. My next point, and I also asked if, if, if Mr. Cahill could share the, the photo of a stone wall, this changes direction completely. I was happy that preservation finally became a part of the conversation at the last meeting, and I asked Mr. Cahill to share this photo. It shows the stone wall that runs from South Street all the way back beyond my property. Now, Mr. Cahill did let me know that there is no general zoning bylaws, there's no restrictions to what the town cannon can't do with stone walls and suggested it at least worth mentioning. Anybody that knows about stone walls, they were generally built between 1775, 1825, and based on the history why and when they were built, kind of lays into what, sets in what the Allens would have built back in that time, maybe a little bit before. So I would like to ask Northbridge, that as they talk about preservation, as they talk about history, what would their plans be with any in the way? Stone wall that might still be existing or because of the historic aspects of it, would there maybe be plans to restore some of what has eroded through time and, well, wetlands, erosion and things like that? And then finally, I wasn't sure, this was Fort 9's meeting, Mr. Dubois had mentioned this as well, but with a similar sized building with similar purposes just over the border on the table in Boylston, it seems like that you guys are trying to propose an awful lot of loading dock logistics space very close to each other and just wonder the viability of this. There's no tenant signed and there's no real end purpose to the demand of these buildings. I would just like to say that there would be nothing worse and would be a shame if these buildings were to be developed and left emptied or vacant for an awful long time with no real, um, no real purposes, especially where the other site has much more truck friendly access, highway accessibility. If I was a business owner looking for logistic distribution space, I'd use the other spot based on the traffic alone here. So while a pipe dream, I'd just like to suggest that Northbridge set a precedent, set all the land aside for conservation, use it for corporate parties, get togethers, the barn, we could have, you know, their Christmas parties, we could do square dancing, and we could call it the Northbridge Allen Family Farm Preserve. Send those trucks to Boylston. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, do you have a question? Could you please identify yourself, your name and address?
Ed Giordano, 7 Harvest Road. I had a couple of questions. One, I'd like to know if it's a public meeting with the MassDOT?
That I can't answer, I don't know.
It is not.
It is not. Can we get minutes to that meeting and find out who attends that meeting?
There are typically meeting minutes that are prepared after those, so we should be able to get a copy of those.
So if I leave my business card, you'll be able to get me copies of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You, you mentioned that you did your comparison, your paper comparison, based upon a previous study of a building that's not being built. I think it is more, not as, more genuine if you actually do your study based upon what's there now, which is no traffic, rather than saying, you know, there were going to be 4,000 cars, now there's going to be less. I don't think that's actually helpful. I had looked at the Howard Stein study, the traffic study for Route 20 that the MassDOT is doing their plans on, and the traffic along from South Street moving up to Cherry has estimated at 20,000 vehicles a day. That's a daily rate with a 0.5% increase. It's public information, so I think maybe your study could include those numbers rather than saying it's just going to be some traffic increase or a percentage of 0.5 increase. What is the actual number going to be? In addition, that study did have information about the UPS along this Grafton Shrewsbury line of an additional 1,000 vehicles a day coming out onto Route 20. Add that into Market Basket, add that into this study, you're going to just stop Route 20, just like the red line that he had there. Also, when you're coming down, and the study includes it, when you're coming down Route 20, going towards your development, past Wheeler Brader, there's a slight hill. Your sight line coming down to trucks, which are going to be taking a left-hand turn, are not visually, there's not a clear line of sight until you're over the hill. I drive it every day. I know there isn't. There's no truck turning, so I don't have to worry about that. But that, the most accidents along that section, again, public study, are rare accidents. They're hitting somebody else from behind because they don't see them. I think that should be really looked at. The DOT study does not identify a turning lane. At most, it's, their study states that it's going to, in public record, two lanes both ways on Route 20 with no designated turning lane in that section of Route 20. So a truck coming out of this area would slow the traffic down. We've all seen 18-wheelers, they do a great job, they stay right in their lane, they never get into the next lane. And in rush hour traffic, it's going to be a mess. I would like to know if I could get a copy of the questions that you wrote. I can give you my business card. It's public information, true?
They're all available on the website. Have to send you a link.
Website? Okay. And I guess that's about it, but I would like to see, I'm going to go in back David and hope that no development happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Just want to be quick. Just a quick one, I know it's all.
Please identify yourself, name and address.
I'm Donna Kishara, Thomas Farm, 29 Thomas Farm. You talk about cars or vehicles, is there a factor that you use for trucks versus cars? Because, you know, you're saying, you've mentioned 11-second maximum impact. It takes 11 seconds for one truck to go through a light, you know, from a dead stop. And if you're adding hundreds of trucks to Route 20, I'm just having problems with the math where you're studying saying that the whole impact is like, you know, an impact, max impact of 11 seconds at an intersection. I'm just having a little problem with that. And pretty much what everyone else is saying. I just, it's going to be nuts, you know? So hopefully it's a no.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Tracy Picaro, 27 Thomas Farm. Mr. Cahill, I had sent you a memo yesterday and I was curious as to whether or not the board had received it. And if not, I have copies that I would like to hand out.
Yeah, if you have copies, I don't recall getting. I don't recall receiving one.
Thank you.
Specific to traffic.
Thank you. Do you have an extra copy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so first, I mean, I would just like to address the fact that with no occupant identified, no hours of operation identified, it's very difficult, again, to, you know, understand how they would know what the traffic impact would be. You know, also the Cherry Street, I know what you're talking about with South Street. Cherry Street has become a speedway to the rail station in Grafton, a gateway to the commercial development on Centec Boulevard, a testing area for all local car dealerships on Route 9, a bus route to AA Transportation, a truck route to the commercial development on Route 20 end of Cherry Street. And it doesn't, I mean, there's, there's no speed limit set on Cherry Street, nor are there any stop signs on any of the adjacent streets going down Cherry.
Mike, can I interrupt you for a moment? I believe if you go in front of the Board of Selectmen, they can address any of your street issues that you have relative to stop signs and things of that nature.
Absolutely, but I'm just saying with the increased truck traffic, the chances of Cherry Street being used the same as South Street would be used as a cutoff, very viable. And also, one other question with regard to turning into the new development. And I know you said this is not a meeting for left-hand turns. Left-hand off of South, would it be the same going left out of the new development? They wouldn't be able to do it, is what I'm asking.
I don't have an answer for that. Do you have an answer for that?
Whether they can turn in and out left onto Route 20?
Yes.
That, so that's going to be a discussion they're going to have with MassDOT.
Okay.
This board doesn't control state highways.
No, no, absolutely, but just a question. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
John Maggodi from 25 Thomas Farm Circle. So there's, I read bits of the MassDOT Route 20 study and it contradicts what Rebecca had put out there in a ton of areas, so I don't know if the board actually got a chance to look at that study and, you know, take some data from that and compare it to what Rebecca had presented because, you know, one, one clip that I got out of it was that that section of Route 20 is deemed one of the top 200 most dangerous intersections in the state. So it completely contradicts what she said of it being a safe area, and it's not. I've used it to commute back and forth to work for the last 28 years, so I believe that makes me an expert. So I get stuck in that traffic that this gentleman had talked about coming up the hill. It's, it's brutal. It's 10 minutes from South Street to Cherry Street, and it's all of a third of a mile. Let's see. And I guess, I was wondering if there's data on the ability for these trucks to gain speed. You come out onto Route 20, which is a steep incline heading west from a dead stop, you know, right now it's two lanes, more than likely they take the right-hand lane and everybody and their brother would be trying to get them around, around them in the left-hand lane. So if they can't gain speed until the top of the hill, cars going 50 miles an hour, it's going to be a, a fight to get into that left lane to get around these trucks, and it's going to cause an accident. So I think, I think that's about it. I just think the study needs to be looked at a little deeper compared to MassDOT and get some real data because I, I just don't believe that we're comparing apples to apples.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
I just had one. Ed Giordano, 7 Harvest Road. I just had one more comment that I didn't see it on my notes. I would rather see a traffic study done before the development is made. If it's done after the development, as it's, as it's been identified, what if there's a problem? Oh, well, we can't do anything. That's the wrong way to do it. Thank you.
I don't know if you, if there's a response. I think that there's mitigation that is proposed from this, correct?
Right, so we, we have done a traffic impact study of what we anticipate the impacts to be, and that's what we presented tonight and what Mr. Finland had peer reviewed. We do expect that we will do some additional analysis and provide you with some responses to that based on the comments from Mr. Finland's letter, the comments that we will receive from MassDOT next week, as well as some of the comments tonight from the public as well that we'll incorporate into those, those responses. The post-occupancy studies that I mentioned was to go back after the fact and make sure that the impacts that the project is actually generating are consistent with the traffic impact and access study. And there are certain thresholds that are typically set in place for additional mitigation measures that might be required if we do exceed those anticipated impacts.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually, so Ms. Brown's speaking about has been implemented at both Lake Way Commons, the, known as the Whole Foods Plaza, I guess, these days, and is also in the conditions of the decision for the Market Basket mixed-use project that was, is under construction right now, the Edge-Mer Crossing Project. So you have these post-pre or proposed analysis and traffic studies going on, but then also baked into the decision is typically for a project of this size, you'd have a post-construction analysis that's done and like Ms. Brown alluded to, if certain benchmarks are hit those trigger, then other remediation efforts. I was going to also ask, I don't know where Steve went. He's out there, he's just on the back. I had asked Mr. Finland if he could just briefly address. could just briefly address the MEPA process for us and how mitigation works through that, through the state, especially for things on state highways like Route 20. If you could just quickly explain to the public and the board how that, just briefly how that process works, the feedback process.
Sure. For the record, I'm Stephen Finland from McNamara Associates. So I think was touched on earlier by the applicant, the previous submission for this site did go through the MEPA process, which is really the permitting process for the state. At that time, they went through a full, I think it was an FEIR, which is a final environmental impact report. And what happens as part of that process is this look at, they take public input during that whole process, they look at all the information, and then they develop what we call a Section 61 finding section, which really summarizes everything that needs to be required for that project, where there's a document as part of the MEPA process, excuse me, that was done for that previous project. My understanding is the applicant is going to be going for a potential notice of project change for that, to see what this project may trigger and what may need to happen. So I think until that conversation happens, it's unclear on what they're going to need to do, but the fact that I think was stated tonight is that was a larger project. And I just want to say, so we looked at this project, it was looked at, we didn't look at what was done before. We looked at what was done here. But what they're going to do is look at what was proposed before, what conditions maybe were required of that site at the time, and then look at this application and see what's going to be required as part of this application. So that will be something that will happen, I believe. I think there is going to be representative from MEPA at the meeting on the 22nd, so that'll get the ball rolling again on that process. And where it goes, I think, you know, I've assumed that you guys have kept a loop on that, but it would most likely have to be a refiling of the notice of project change, which may sort of restart it again. We'll see.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Singer?
Yeah, David Singer, 400 South Street. Just a couple of follow-ups with Ms. Brown, all the analysis, all the analytics. That's what I love about my Google screenshot. You can do all this surveying, spend all this money, and assume what's going to happen? Those Google screenshots, there was no MDM report about it. There was nothing in this traffic study. It actually shows you what happens. So there seems to be a lot of discrepancy, and so I would definitely take concern of that. As far as the speeds on Route 20, that's a very good point, I think this woman might have made, and a couple of people made. You got a lot of different speeds from the lighted intersection at South Street if traffic is stopped or moving, if traffic is stopped and moving at the Cherry Street section. Great point. If you've got a truck heading west that stopped at the South Street intersection and is slowly climbing west Route 20 towards Cherry Street, and a guy in the car decides he's moving along and he's passing to the left, at the same time a guy is coming out of this development, turning left, that's a disaster. Your sight lines coming down the hill, again, that slope that comes down. If you've got a truck that's barreling through the Cherry Street intersection because he's got a green light, he's hitting that crest at 50, 55 miles an hour. If he has to accelerate, he's lucky to be at 30 coming down that hill. My mechanic, Keith Bates, has moved there at Fiori's, and we had a big talk about left-hand turns and coming out. I know it's not for tonight, but they, they deal with it every day, and they actually will turn right, go west, and turn around at seasons or that intersection if it's that busy and that dangerous, to go to head east. And that's during the light time of the days. I had my car serviced the other day and was able to get out pretty easily, but not before you look each way 10 times. There's a lot of factors, that surveys, that sight lines, you know, a lot that just don't anticipate. This is a recipe for disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? Keeping in mind that this meeting is going to be continued, so if it's a relevant question for the moment, that's fine, but if it's something that you're, you think it can wait, and that's up to you. So yes, sir, do you have a?
Pertaining to this, so.
Very good, please.
John McGory, 25 Thomas Farm Circle. So I've read this evening before I came here that the Board of Selectmen sent a letter to Mass DOT suggesting a ban on South Street making left-hand turns. So has anything like that been in play? I know you can't speak for the Board of Selectmen, but it sounds like they have input on the traffic on Route 20, where, you know, you said that's a state thing, it's not a Mass DOT, it's not a Shrewsbury thing, it's a state thing. We sent a letter to Mass DOT saying taking a left out of South Street on the southern side is a bad idea, and we believe it should be banned. It sounds like they should get involved here as well. So that might be a Board of Selectmen question rather than a planning board question, but it sounds like they got involved.
And I don't have the information to give you any insight as to what the reasoning behind that is, so I'd rather not comment on it because I'm not involved with it.
It just seemed like a double standard to me, you know? Take a left out of this new development, but don't do it 1,000 feet down the street. So.
I understand.
I can look into that for you. That's the first I'm hearing about it. So I'll check with the Selectmen and.
It was on the website.
Okay. I'll double check.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Not seeing any hands raised. I'll entertain a motion to continue both of the hearings.
Excuse me, sir, do we have to do them separately?
No, you can, you can just continue them both.
I move that we continue the Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan Development Special Permit for Northbridge Partner LLC to our July 1st, 2021 meeting at 7:00 PM.
And you got to do these special, so there's a site plan and a special permit.
Oh, okay. That's what I was asking. Okay. So you want me to do them both at the same time?
Yes, please.
I would also like to continue our Special Permit Meeting for Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan for Northbridge Partners LLC to our July 1st, 2021 meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll post. We want to post.
See you next month.
Okay. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, see you in a couple of weeks.
Now, I know there's a number of you that are going to be leaving right now. If you could please limit your hallway conversations until you get outside. I'd appreciate it because we still have more things to cover.
Thank you.
David Singer.
Give it 10 seconds.
I just want to give you a copy of that.
Okay.
I just want to give you a copy of that.
All right. Yeah, I'll talk to Rebecca about that. Yeah. Oh, you already gave her this? All right. We can move on to our next, thank you, good night. Move on to our next item of business, which is new business, which is discuss issue for bond for 235 Main Street in the amount of $4,232. Do I have a motion? Does anybody have any questions about the bond?
No questions.
Questions?
I move that we enter into a bonding agreement on the 235 Main Street property in the amount of $4,232.
Do I have a second?
Right by the chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item of business is to endorse some plans. We can do that after we close the hearing. So we've got some plans for definitive site plan, definitive plans to Cypress Avenue and Puritan Street.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we only have one of them this evening for, I believe. Which one is it?
Puritan.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll get to those signatures before we leave this evening. With that, that's all I have on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and have wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Just going to put it on this table.